Okay.
Yeah.
You guys have some more?
Hey, how you doing?
What's going on? Johnson. Johnson's coming? Didn't say he wouldn't come. Six o'clock, the meeting will come to order. We have the invocation and pleasurable allegiance by the councilman Mike.
I'll follow.
I'll be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thou wilt be with us on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from sin.
Our purging leadings to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our own.
Thank you.
Item one, approval of the agenda.
A motion, please.
Motion by Mr. Carl.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Mike. Any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Item two, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 12, 2025.
I make the motion now.
Motion by Mr. Danny.
And I just wanted to put this, put a record on page. This is, this is just simple, but there is actually a grammatical error on Andrews Street in, in that paragraph where it's listed. I think it's listed as Address Street, yeah. Right here.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. But that's all I have.
We've got the motion in a second. Any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item three, delegation five minute limit. Mr. Riddle? Yes, sir.
My name is Charles Riddle. I'm here representing Complete Care Staffing Agency, LLC, who applied for an occupational license today and found out that she wouldn't have the meeting tonight. She may have to wait until February or March. So I'm asking the, the council to approve the occupational license. Their goal is to open up in Marksville, actually on the second floor of my law office. And what they do, she's a registered nurse. Elise Clausen is opening the business. She's going to provide staffing for hospitals, nursing homes, and other health agencies in the event that they need someone and haven't had them, you know, not have somebody available. That's her business, and I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
I make the motion, we give it to him.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Danny, second by Mr. Torrey.
Good luck, Mr. Riddle.
Thank you.
Any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
No questions? All right, I object, never mind.
Oh, thank you.
Anyone else in the delegation?
Good evening. Mr. Charles, is he yours? Good evening. For the month of November, Acadian ran 834 total calls in the parish. 559 of that was emergency calls, and 275 of those was non-emergency. We have a parish-wide average emergency response time of 14:41 parish-wide. Average patients per day is 25, 25.5 patients a day. When we ran the calls, Marksville is still continuing to be our hotspot for the city, for the parish, with 163 of those 834 calls. The average response time in Marksville is 10:09. Any questions?
Appreciate it.
I just have a statement. Just wanted to thank you all for coming out Saturday night.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Anyone else, delegation? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me? All right, good evening, Marksville mayor, city council, and the citizens. I'm inviting you to step forward and claim your place as official crisis team in Humanities 2020 Group Crisis League. We're a national movement built on local power. Imagine your city, your parish, your people stitching to the fabric of this league, your name on the jersey, your responders on the field, your leadership setting the tone for the nation. Marksville is a red zone for violent crimes with assault rates 18 times the national average, yet deeper emergencies are invisible. Mental health crises are going unreported, untreated, and unspoken. In crisis comes order. My name is Maki Jackson, CEO, founder of Humanity 2020 Group. We're a crisis management league in Region 6, 7, and 8. I did have information I passed out today. We also have our credentials to show you, to display our credibility and validate our expertise. I want to share the proof that our crisis league isn't just a concept, it's a lifeline. Want to talk about some case studies, real lives and real impact. I want to ground this vision into reality. I want, I want you to take a listen at eight cases that shows what it means to intervene early, with dignity, and with plan. Alexandria Colfax, excuse me, Alexandria College Campus Intervention Suicide Averted. A young man on a college campus, I have to sit here, excuse me, on college campus had wrote a suicide note. He was ready. We got there, we got the 911 call, we got there. Our crisis responder was on the scene within minutes. We responded. We took him next step in care before he can do anything to harm himself or carry out his plan. He's alive today because we didn't wait, we moved. Two, Alexandria, the best violence crisis, from violence to recovery. A husband called our crisis line in distress. His wife was battling addiction. She was bullying him to give more money for drugs. It escalated towards violence. Officers had came and gone. We stayed on the line, we dispatched responders, we deescalated the situation, and we gave crisis a plan. We got her into detox, got him into a program, then, then we also got him in IOP. They live separately at this moment. He's sober, she's in treatment. No charges, no bloodshed, just a new beginning. Three, Alexandria, when crises become a lifeline. Now, this is one of the biggest complex crisis call that we have, Tuckin'. One that was most complex, urgent 911 call. A crisis responder, a mother called in distress. She was depressed, hopelessness, helpless, and abandoned by situations. Her parents both had transitioned, as her own daughter was expressing suicidal thoughts. We mobilized immediately, and we, what we found was not just a mental health urgency, but it was a full-blown humanitarian crisis. The family had no electricity, no running water, no income. Her mother and father, like I said, had passed away, and the only source of income this young lady had was taking out the trash. She was challenged, and her daughter, who had never used drugs, was enrolled into a IOP program, and we was wondering why. We found out that was her enormity. We discovered that she had nowhere else to go. No one had even noticed she hasn't bathed. She possibly hadn't any utilities for years. Behavioral health providers were billing insurance, picking her up regularly, but never asked her hard questions. No one seen the full picture. We did. We discovered the mother was managing everything alone, while her own mental health issues was, was, was front and center. There were, they were both invisible, but those billings were. We stepped in, we worked with the city of Alexandria, we post, we called property standards. We even got the insurance companies cut the electric and water back on. We managed the crisis, and we helped her restart her benefits. We facilitate a, a family intervention, bringing elder sisters and brothers and to stabilize the household, and we held those providers accountable. This is what it means to respond, not just to dispatch, but to see, stay, and stand in the gaps. Colfax, where we just came from, talking to Grant Parish and as well as Colfax Mayor, we are in contract with them, working on deescalating there. But here's a Colfax family rescued from rat-infested to rehouse. A young father called our crisis, I'm talking about very young, maybe about 20 something, called from a collapsing house in Colfax. His partner refused to leave the house that her mother left her, even though the rats overrun the space. We responded quickly. I told them, you cannot live in this condition or raise babies in this condition. The father was displaying depression, and he expressed the condition in the house that he was in, and his, his own mother was also stabbed to death in Colfax, Louisiana. Within three weeks, we managed them. We relocated them. They're safe, they're stable, and they're grateful. Sweetport, this is bigger cases, it's kind of more complex as well. A man called our crisis line to tell us he was beaten to death and woken up alive. I'm gonna say that again, he was beaten to death and woken up alive at the hand of SPB. A very high-profile crisis call is captured on video all across the social media. This weren't just a quiet emergency, they were public reckoning. This man's video reached over 100K views, quickly amplifying the urgency of crisis resolution. We managed this crisis fallout as we turned the viral moments into verified intervention. These highlights reflect our commitment to transparency and dignity and measurable impact, especially when the whole world is watching, right? We managed also to continue managing a young woman. Another video went viral from a falsely arrest pest control, dropped charges, Maya add. A mother was breastfeeding three children, and we reunited her with her children, and we managed her to build her life, and she is now an insurance agent, and she's also modeling because of Humanity 2020 Group. Can I, can I get extension?
Ma'am, no, but we have some stuff that's on the agenda, but we usually, you, you 10 minutes so far.
Yes, I actually have 13 minutes.
Give me a couple more minutes, ma'am.
And, and I don't want to be rude or anything, but I was, been talking to y'all since November the 18th. So I come prepared from Sweetport, and if I can just give a couple more minutes to finish, because it makes sense, this is crisis, and you guys are on our, you're in our region. So is that okay?
Yeah.
Please? Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, so now, thank you. Now, we also have seven, we're a managed 10-year-old, 10-year employee to the city of Sweetport. We saved his job, his dignity with a DUI scare. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip a little bit, miss, I don't want to get you guys too antsy, because I really want to get to the end. So I'm gonna skip some of our case studies, you guys get the picture. Who we are, we are expert in crisis management, National Crisis League. We compete to solve crisis with the same vigor and stat-driven intensity as professional sports league. Our impacts, we track metrics like response time, crisis plan, community trust, and resolution outcome, just to name a few. Turning crisis into a management of scoreboard. What we do at Humanity 2020 Group, we meet at, we meet crisis at the front door as we welcome in with compassion and a crisis plan. Why does this matter? Every violent act, every overdose, every domestic violence starts with a crisis. We catch it early, we build customized crisis plan for just the cause and for the city. We adapt and we follow up. We offer a partnership, a way forward. In our services, we have three services. Mobile crisis response, onsite de-escalation via warm, warm lines, 911, manage care organizations, our own crisis line, referral lines. And our goal is immediate response, de-escalate, assess. 48 hours mobile crisis follow-up. Our second, third one is our community crisis resupport. We give a crisis plan up to 15 days. Our goal is to customize a crisis plan and build coping mechanism and future tools. And our vision for Region 6, as well as for And our vision for Region Six as well as for Marksville, to propose an adoption of our Crisis League pilot program that creates a professional job for certified-trained crisis responders. These responders will answer nonviolent, non-emergency calls, mental health, family disputes, disturbance, domestic violence, substance alcohol abuse disorder, and many more self-identified crisis. Our team deploy quickly, I'm trying to go through this quickly, I'm so apologizing to you guys. We, we credit that Marksville can lead the region in redefining public safety by managing people first. Our unofficial model is to manage people first before we manage the problem. This approach reduces harm and cost. And so I'm gonna go back to the ends, I don't want to hold you guys up. I prepared for this meeting almost three weeks, and this is really not fair. So I'm trying to get to the end, I apologize, you guys. Oh, gosh. I'm not gonna give up. So before I close, I ask the city council, the mayor, and I ask the sheriff, chief of police, everybody's here as citizens, to adopt our Crisis League, to win over crisis and give crisis a plan. To adopt it as a city-backed model, to adopt it as a parish-backed model, to adopt it for collaboration, to adopt it as your public safety. Let's move from crisis to coordination, from silos to united crisis, unified Crisis League. We're ready to serve, we're ready to win together. We have MOUs and pilot programs ready to deploy. All we need now is green light, next step, next checkpoint, whether that's a council meeting, internal revenue, or a schedule, a follow-up. We're here to make a seamless impact. Let's lock in the next step of managing people, and I'm gonna yield back for any questions. I'm assuming I'm not gonna get any questions, right? I'm out of time.
Well, I'm sure some of the council members have some questions about, you know, the stuff that y'all do, and some, some other towns that y'all have previously worked with, I mean, before the council adopts anything. I think they would want to know what your experience is with some of the other towns that you, you have implemented this program.
Okay, so would you like me to answer that question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so our license, we are, we are definitely certified to do crisis management over twenty parish, Region Six and Region Eight. We have done under two hundred, under two hundred calls, private funding, under twenty-three months. And we have done Alexandria, we have done Colfax, Pineville, Sweetport, Monroe. And we have, we're now currently in talks with Colfax and Grant on what it's gonna take to deploy and hire locally to get that community pride. And we, we reported all of our, all of our calls, get reported to the state, so this is not, I'm making this up. We also have contract with the six MCLs, and we also report there as well.
What is the total cost to like, we call it Marksville, if we go ahead and allow you to come in and implement your program?
Great question. So what we do, we normally use what I say, a customized crisis plan. We will have to listen, ask a couple questions, and we customize a crisis plan based off of what your needs are when it come to crisis management. So that's a great question, but it's something that I could answer today, because I haven't even got to the second level of just the narrative to find out what is the need, what is your cause, and, and all that plays into what, what we would charge. And we also do a fifty-fifty, I didn't get to that, a fifty-fifty partnership. We working with not just the city, but also the parishes to maybe do a fifty-fifty partnership. We're fifty city, then our group, and then also the parish. So we, we just not in that, we, we in those talks right now, and this is our first initial introduction.
Ma'am, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
So you, you talked about being rushed and not being fair. I think it would be unfair for you to expect us tonight to make a decision on what seemed to me like a speed-talking presentation, okay? Do you have all of your information, because I didn't get anything?
So, so I'm, I'm gonna, first of all, I want to say, when you say it's not fair, I've been working on this since November the eighteenth to be here today.
No, 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 I was just agreeing with you saying.
Okay, so, so the rush part of it, I didn't get to the, the meat of it, because I didn't want to kind of have you guys kind of antsy, because I am in the middle of other folks, so I just kind of speed it up. Anything you guys need, I'm very open to giving you everything. I have my credentials there, have everything that's needed, the backup that we know we're talking, we are experts. And we're certified to do interface with law enforcement, we're certified to do crisis management, yes, sir. But I just kind of, I, I prepared for this moment, y'all, I'm very excited.
I'm, I'm not challenging your credentials, ma'am, I'm not.
I'm just bragging.
I'm, I'm simply stating a fact.
Is there a speaker there?
I don't have no phone on me.
Yeah, mine is off.
I'm, I'm simply stating a fact that it was rushed. Do you feel that it was rushed?
It was rushed, and then at the very end, very end of it, it says three things. Vote, internal, check, time. I just want to know what can we do to start the conversation for another day? I'm not expecting you guys to rule on anything. I've, I've been dealing this for a long time, I'm not new at this, I just wanted to put everything out there and see where it sits.
I'd like, I'd like Mr. Carl.
I would just like to finish speaking. That's all I would like.
Well, hey, I, I'm here to manage crisis, maybe I can manage it for you, I have no problem. I just, I just came off the road, I love what I do, I'm passionate, and if you want to go back and forth.
Let him finish is what he's saying, let him finish saying what he's trying to say, go ahead, Carl.
Okay, as I was trying to say, I didn't get whatever information the other councilman got. Okay? So I don't even know what I'm looking at here. Do you have all of this in, in what is supposed to be real time? You condensed your presentation to thirteen minutes, which seems to me, with, with this binder that I see here, it could, your presentation, is this your binder?
That's my policy procedure, that's our credentials, our license.
There, there seems to be a lot more.
Absolutely.
Okay, that, that's, that's the road I'm on right now. I'm, I'm not trying to cut you off or cut you down, I'm just saying that I feel that we're missing out on a lot of things that might be important to your presentation, that you could send us electronically for us to look at, at our leisure.
Absolutely.
And we could invite you back to further discuss this. You speak about being in talks with Grant and Colfax and all of those, all of those municipalities. How long have you been in talks with them?
Just yesterday, actually, just yesterday. We started, we just left a city, a, a meeting like this, and we are in contracts, they sending me all the data so I can customize a crisis plan. Yes, sir.
So it is my request that you get with Ms. Remmion, who's our secretary, to get our email addresses, to send us all of your information, so we can look at it that way.
Absolutely, and I was invited to do this from the city mayor, I mean, city, excuse me, the city manager, to come here and make this presentation.
Thank you.
And I'm, I'm under his direction, and I'm here to just.
What I'd like, and I don't know about the other council members, I'd like for the chief, go ahead and get in touch with some of the chiefs that you have previously worked with, to see what the job performance of your, your organization is, and how it's benefited each one of the towns. I mean, we need something to fall back on, I mean, we just can't go ahead and.
I have all that.
But chief, can you go ahead and get some numbers of.
I, I'm just grateful to be here to let you know that I'm here to manage crisis. Again, I'm only here to an introduction, I didn't think anything was gonna come of it, but you don't know until you start. I'm here to let you know what we have.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else, delegation? Mr. Morgan, I think you could raise your hand.
I wanted to thank the town, the mayor, city council, and the chief, all these people. City workers for Friday, they started with courthouse lighting, and, you know, worked, even the chief with all his police officers. And just to thank y'all for what y'all did, and hopefully that this'll keep going on for a lot more years. Thirty years ago, when I started one there, you know, from thirty years till last year, all it did was start going down. But Saturday night, I mean, this was unbelievable, the people that came. And hopefully that next year will be even bigger, and that we can keep working together to make it for, for the people of the parish. And it's for the parish. I saw people from every, you know, town in the parish there. So just, you know, hopefully that we can work together till next year and get it done again. And I'd like to thank Carl for taking it, taking it over and bringing it back to life. Thank y'all.
One thing I'd like to also say is, is that we need to recognize Dr. Richard Michel for the $5,000 per year that he gives to buy those presents at Walmart that are issued to all the kids. And his name was never mentioned, and I think we need to go ahead and publicly thank him and his family for the Margaret Michel Toy and Doll Fund, which went ahead and bought all those gifts at Walmart.
Well, it's not only Dr. Michel, there's other people that give to it too.
I know, but he gives $5,000 every year.
Well, it was the Miss Margaret Michel Toy and Doll Fund.
Right, and we were there Wednesday to help with Toys for Tots. The Walmart employees were excellent, and they filled bags and bags of toys, and I think the final tally mark was four thousand nine hundred somewhat. So it was kept below the $5,000 mark, if I'm correct, is that correct? Those of you who were there, right, right. So a lot of people took part, a lot of people are to be commended. Yes.
Like you said, working together.
That's right.
That's what, what.
And that's what it's all about, it's this spirit of Christmas.
That's what you get when you work together.
It's nothing personal. It's about the season and those who need.
You know, the kids, I've seen that through the years, how much the kids enjoy it. I mean, that's why the parents, the grandparents, everybody come.
And their pets on leashes. I saw a lot of pets on leashes Saturday night.
But thank y'all.
And it snowed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan.
All right.
All right, anybody else in the delegation? If not, we'll move on. Item four, approval of occupation license for RW Tech. Yes, sir. You can come up and tell them what you plan on doing and.
Good evening, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Richard Newman, I also pastor New Life Assembly of God, so I'm used to preaching, but I wasn't sure what I was gonna have to do tonight. But RW Tech is, it's a web-based company. We build websites for people, we help businesses do their AI. I help them with SMS messaging, marketing, anything that a small business would need to connect with the world. I have a software that I help sell and help them maintain. So I won't have people coming to my house, because I don't want them coming to my house anyways. That's why it's a web-based business, I can run it off my laptop anywhere. Honestly, I'd probably bring them to my church if I had to meet with them, so. But I just, we're just trying to help people, and small businesses especially, so. But thank you for the opportunity to speak, if there's any questions.
What's the address of your business?
Nine twenty-eight South Washington.
And that's your home?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir, I, I wouldn't even put that on there, so everybody doesn't know where it is, but legally I have to, so. But yeah, everything is run off, off of the internet through chat, Zoom, cellphone, emails.
Motion for this call, second by Mr. Mike. Any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Thank you, sir. Item five, approval of occupation license for Newman Bookkeeping LLC.
Good evening, my name is Wendy Newman. I've been a bookkeeper for about twenty years, South Louisiana and Alexandria, and I just wanted to start my own virtual bookkeeping business out of my home, which is the same as RW Tech, nine twenty-eight South Washington. And with that, it's virtual, nobody's gonna be visiting my home in the residential area, because we don't want people coming to our home. But if I gotta meet them, I can meet them at their offices or wherever.
Motion.
Second. I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Paul, second by Mike. All right, any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Thank you.
Item six, approval occupation license for Unlimited Taxes and More Franchising Company LLC.
Good evening, my name's Chantel Lavelle. Our office is gonna be ran out of eight hundred Tunica Drive East in Marksville, Louisiana. I'm here, the CEO is out of Hindville, Georgia. My boss is, my boss is out of Alexandria. We will be, we gained over a hundred and fifty clients in a Boss Parish area, so they wanted to get an office in a Marksville area, because most of their clients are coming from this area.
Can you describe to me the exact location of where this office will be?
Eight hundred Tunica Drive East in Marksville.
Right.
By Popeyes.
Okay.
Where Mr. Cash were.
Okay, okay, in the shopping center behind Popeyes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, motion.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Carl, second by Mr. Thornton, any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Hey, all three are gonna have to go to the city hall in the morning, I think it's a hundred dollars for the license that they have to pay.
Yeah, they don't need to.
Yeah, so go to the city, go to city hall in the morning and see.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Seven, city engineer report.
All right, thank you, mayor and council. I'll go through my reports pretty brief this month. First item on my list is our water sector project. The first project was where we went and repaired the sewer ponds. In that project, we had to replace a gate. So one of the valves, one of the gate valves on the pipes from the chlorine contact chamber to the pump station was rusted out and needed to be replaced. We've since replaced that gate, and it is now causing another issue down the line that we've got to address. So that's an issue that's outstanding. I've got, I have to meet with Rondale probably later this week, more likely next week, to figure out what we need to do there. But there, there is one issue there we've got to address. The second part of that project was our sewer main repairs, pump station repairs, and airator installations at the wastewater treatment plant. That project is substantially complete. We have an item on the agenda tonight to accept that project as substantially complete. Next on my list is the DOTD four fifty-two drainage improvements project. That's where we had to relocate our utilities. That project was accepted last month as substantially complete. There is one issue on the project, some of the patches that we did in the road where we had to cut some valves in on the water line has settled. So if you pass there, you'll notice that gate, that valve box is sticking up about a half inch. So I've just got to get out there, look at it, and figure out the best way to fix that, and then make sure that DOTD is amenable to whatever solution we come up with. So I am aware of the issue, and we plan to address that one as similar to the other one, either later this week or early next week. Next on my list is our LCDBG clearance program. The environmental has been approved. We are waiting on an executed grant agreement between the city and the state, and then once we get that, we should receive our authorization to begin soliciting quotes to demo those houses that we have. Next is our street project, that's the LCDB street project. The environmental has been submitted, we got comments back, we have addressed, we, actually, your, your grant administrator has addressed those comments, we've submitted our plans, addressed any comments there. We are simply waiting on the state to give us the approval to go ahead and solicit bids on that project. The issue that we're going to run into on that one is the government shutdown has delayed that contract, so I'm expecting some delays there. I would, like, normally I'd be telling you, within the next thirty days, we should hear something. I won't be surprised if it's thirty to, if it's not sixty days before we hear anything. Again, that was our street project. On our LWI Bayou Prairie drainage project, it's probably been about thirty days ago, we submitted our H&amp;H analysis and our final application, we've received comments on that, we're now in the process of addressing those comments. We submitted our water sector application, I talked to you guys about that last month. That's where we applied for a project, some funding to renovate the abandoned, well, it's not abandoned, the, the water well that is currently not in use, and that was, would be on an emergency-only basis. So that application has been submitted, now we just wait and see what response we get. And that is all I have on my list, but I will stay up here for any questions or to go on to the next item, which is the resolution to accept the water sector project as substantial.
Yeah, go ahead, get to the mic.
Okay, so on that one, again, the project's substantially complete. The next, the next thing to do is accept it officially by the council, and that will start the contractor's forty-five-day lean period.
Need a motion? I'll make a motion, motion of Mr. Mike.
I'll say it.
Second by Mr. Danny. Any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
All right, thank y'all.
Hey, go ahead, go ahead.
No, no, I was just gonna say that if y'all don't mind, I have to head out, but if any questions on anything.
Before you go, whenever y'all did smoke testing over here, did we ever get a chance to do it back on this end?
No, the area you mentioned at last meeting, no, sir.
Okay, do we know about when are we gonna do something over here?
Yeah, I was waiting for the next big rain.
Okay.
Go and look at it, and then go smoke test. Start the smoke test, and it's still a little drizzle, it's that we won't get enough smoke in the line with water.
Okay.
I'll wait on the next rain.
All right, that's it, that's all I have.
Anybody, anything else? Okay, all right, thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I don't see y'all, y'all have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Item nine, approve of the Solomon Northrop Law Commission. A resolution, y'all have it all in front of y'all?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Make the motion by Mr. Torren.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Anita, any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All right. Ten, approval of the holiday schedule for twenty twenty-six.
I, I gotta quit.
Go ahead.
I have a question, a, and this is, it might get crazy, but, on the weekend holidays, why are we even giving days before or after? When did that start?
What is that again, Phil?
Holidays on the weekends, why are we doing anything to date before or after?
Well, we, what we do, we get all the supervisors and, to get together and, uh, present what they want on the calendar, and we either go ahead and approve it or disapprove it.
So, and, and the reason why I ask that is because, again, we still have a lot of city workers that, on these holidays, they don't get paid, right? Because they're part-time workers, they don't get paid when they're off. So, why are we giving days on the, uh, Monday, or Friday, or a Monday, whenever the rest of the people can't even get paid? Unless we're gonna give them all holiday pay.
That's what they submit, and that's what we vote on, if, you know, if you don't approve the way it's, it is, it's.
Well, my, my thing is, is if we can't give it to everybody, why are we gonna give it to some?
That's what's presented to us, they get with all the department heads, and that's the days that they want to go ahead and, and, uh, incorporate in as a calendar.
Carl, let me ask you a question, on your, at your job over there, whenever y'all are off on the, uh, uh, and it's a weekend, do y'all get that Monday or that Sunday? I mean, uh, that Monday or that Friday off, if it's on a holiday?
That's a determination by the board directors.
Okay.
And, but it's not, it's not done a year in advance, it's done like the previous, like, for, for the Christmas holidays, our board directors decided in November when we would close for, for Christmas.
Okay.
And this is always happened, we get with all the, the supervisors, they submit what days they would like to have, they forward it to the council, and it's either we say yea or nay, or we come up with something else. So that's what's in front of us now, and I need a motion to go ahead and either approve it or disapprove it.
Well, my, like I said, my only issue is, is the guys who's, some part-time city workers, who the ones, who's the meat of the, uh, the city, who's doing all the work, they not getting paid.
Well, the only ones that get holiday pay is those that work, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, those that work is the only ones that get actual holiday pay.
They're not taking a vacation day from, they're getting paid for their work.
Yeah, but, but the ones who off that Friday, they're not working.
But it's gonna get paid, they're getting paid to be off, to sit at that house.
So you paying your part-timers? I was under the influence that it was not getting paid.
Now, the ones that physically work get an extra.
They get extra.
Okay. Well, then I stand corrected, but I was under the.
The extra is called, is what the holiday pay is.
I was under the influence that they do not get paid because they're off that day, they're part-time, so they don't get paid.
Just like they work.
Okay, all right.
I'll make a motion, we accept this.
Got a motion by Mr. Mike.
Second.
Second by Ms. Anita, any other discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Item eleven, approval of the Renee Borrell Presidential Certitude of Passage in Order to Complete the Fair Street Bridge Repair and Authorization from the Mayor to Sign Presidential Certitude of Passage. What, what this is about, uh, they have a, a bridge close to Judge Piazza's house, that goes into that subdivision, and that's the only road that goes in there, and the bridge needs to be repaired, so for us to go ahead and have access by a fire truck or emergency personnel that would possibly need to go in that subdivision, uh, Renee gave us a, uh, a right of way to pass through his property, so that's, that's what this, this is about.
And I'm prepared and sent it to Renee, he's, he's all right with everything with it. So we just need.
I need a motion to go ahead and approve it.
Motion.
Sir?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Carl.
I'll say it.
Second by Mr. Mike, any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Okay, twelve, financial statements and bill, member, Councilwoman, Ms. Anita, associate.
For November twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five, city hall, seventeen thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars and fifty cents. Police, forty-one thousand one hundred twenty-two dollars and thirty-four cents. Fire, sixteen thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty-five cents. Street, sixty-two thousand one hundred fifty-one dollars and sixty-one cents. Beautification, six thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars and seventy-four cents. Total general fund, one hundred forty-four thousand one hundred sixty-three dollars and four cents. Sewer, sixty-four thousand ninety-two dollars and ninety-two cents. AWC, sixty-five thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars. Water, twenty-seven thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars and forty-five cents. Total, one hundred fifty-seven thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars and thirty-seven cents. Grand total, three hundred one thousand seven hundred twenty-six dollars and forty-one cents. I make a motion that these bills be approved for payment and paid.
Motion by Ms. Anita.
I'll say it.
Second by Mr. Mike, any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Departmental reports, Ms. Chrissy Grumion, Secretary of Treasury.
Sales tax collected for the month of November twenty twenty-five was three hundred fifty-four thousand seven hundred eighty-three dollars and forty-six cents. One percent sales tax was one hundred seventy-seven thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy-three cents. One-half percent sales tax was eighty-eight thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars and eighty-six cents. Public safety was eighty-eight thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars and eighty-seven cents. That was an increase of one point four seven from October twenty twenty-five, which was col, not, which had a collection of three hundred forty-nine thousand six hundred forty-two dollars and nine cents. That was also an increase of three point thirty-three percent from November of two thousand twenty-four, which had a collection of three hundred forty-three thousand three hundred fifty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy. Chris Dast, the Public Chief.
Okay, for the month of November, the police department handled three hundred ninety-eight complaints, were eight, eight accidents with four injuries, issued fifty citations, made thirty-one arrests. There was five drug arrests made, and there was five cases turned over to the DA's office.
Thank you, chief, appreciate it. Mr. Chris, Power Chief.
Fire report for the month of November, we ran twenty-two calls, thirteen in the city limits, four in the district, and four of those were mutual aid calls, consisted of one fire alarm activation, three brush fires, two medical emergencies, one dumpster fire, two auto accidents, two hazardous conditions, four structural fires, one chimney fire, one electrical emergency, one boat rescue, one smoke smell, one trash fire, one tree fire, and one content fire. We do have a date set for the benefit dinner of Jerry Bordelon family, it's gonna be January eighteenth, Sunday, from ten AM to one PM, be at St. Joseph's Church Hall. So if anybody needs to purchase tickets, please see myself or one of my firemen.
How much are they gonna be?
Ten dollars donation, jambalaya, corn, and a roll. We've got a lot of donations for the food, so I think we'll do well with it. We're gonna also have a cake sale, my wife's gonna take charge of it, and if anybody wants to bake a cake, or make cookies, brownies, whatever, by all means.
Do you have a flyer prepared?
No, only tickets, but we can do one.
Chris, what's the, uh, schedule for the Santa Claus parade throughout town?
It's gonna be the week that school lets, school lets out the Friday. So we're gonna have to do it Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, weather depending. Candy's ordered, it came in.
Can you let us know when you have a concrete date?
Sure, I will, we just have to watch for the weather, pick the best date.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, miss.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chloe.
For the month of November, we've been raking leaves lately, we did some painting over the town over the last month, and the third one is, some bus routes entries has been cut this month. And at the yard now, if you come get gas, the supervisors, we will check your oil, or have somebody doing that at, at, at any time, we'll raise the hood, we're gonna check your oil, add if we need, and the animal count is one. So that's a good thing, but we're picking up a lot of roadkill too, so I just want to let y'all know that, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Chloe, Mr. Shaw.
Not here yet, emergency, we sent a report, said they picked up eighty-eight bags of litter on the state roads, District, uh, one, forty-seven bags, District two, forty-eight bags, District three, seventy-five, District four, fifty-three, District five, fifty-four, a total of three hundred sixty-one bags of litter. And I don't have anything for sewer or safety this month, uh, safety gonna resume next month with the safety inspector coming down, meeting with me, anyone meet with the chief.
Thank you, Rondell.
Rondell, three hundred plus bags of garbage, are we collaborating any with the litter abatement officer for the parish? Thank you.
Ms. Beverly?
Okay, for the month of November, six seven meters was locked, four six customers have paid, five was made in there, but sixteen still open.
Thank you, Ms. Beverly.
Thank you, Beverly.
Ms. Beverly, I know you have one of your employees, it's, it's pretty sick, uh, you have anybody in mind, or does the council have anybody in mind to go ahead and replace that person, because you're pretty shorthanded over there.
Have we, have we advertised for a job?
Well, it just came up that she's, uh, she's down with cancer, and not knowing when she's gonna be back, I spoke to Beverly just now, Ms. Beverly saw it under the, under the weather, her also.
Do we have someone in another department that we could shift temporarily?
Not really. And the deal is, you have to have somebody that has a little bit of experience with, with what they do. Uh, councilmembers, any?
We don't have nobody at, at the police department that we can spare?
Well. Uh, not, not, not right now, I don't believe, don't you? Is, or Craig, or, or Chrissy, do y'all have any applications for office work?
I can look tomorrow.
So are we gonna hire her as a temporary, or seasonal, or are we?
That's the thing, you don't know.
Don't know when she's gonna come back.
If she's gonna come back.
Yeah, right, no, I decline.
Get, uh, Chrissy, get, get with this.
Oh, I decline. I decline all day long.
All right, Buckles?
No. For the month of November, we responded to two hundred service calls, ran twenty-one profiles, repaired fifteen links, installed one new service, and we've been, uh, replacing those dead meters. That's all I have.
Thank you, Buckles, appreciate it.
We do the meetings on the weekend, right?
Some of them during the weekend, the weekend.
Mr. Jonathan?
All I had was the servitude, and that was taken care of, uh, in the, on the regular agenda.
How about that letter, you wanna go to executive session and discuss that?
I'm gonna have to, I mean, I just got to, so I'm gonna have to take some time and look at it.
All right, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Carl. Second, uh, Torren. All in favor, signify by saying aye.